The Rochelle Park Board of Education Candidates Night. My name is Cynthia Fuller and I'm the Midland School PTO President. On behalf of the Midland School PTO, it is my privilege to host this night for the Rochelle Park community. Thank you to all the candidates for their willingness to volunteer to serve the community, and I would like to introduce to you and thank in advance the moderator from the League of Women Voters, Barbara King.
Just to let you know, I don't live in Rochelle Park, so I can't vote for anybody here. That's the way the League does it, bringing somebody from out of the district. We're pleased to have two of the four candidates running for two seats on the Board of Ed in Rochelle Park. The PTO decided on certain rules, but we're changing some of the timing rules because there were only two candidates instead of four. This way, each candidate is going to choose a question. They've already seen all the questions, they've been able to do some research or maybe write some stuff out, but they're going to choose a question. The person who chooses the question will have two minutes to answer, and then the other candidate will have another two minutes to answer. But first, we're going to start with opening statements, and we have opening statements of about two and a half minutes. The candidates drew numbers, and Mr. Matt Truwinski is going to be the first candidate to speak.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew P. Truwinski, and I'm running to retain my seat on Rochelle Park Board of Education. First of all, I would like to thank the PTO for hosting Candidates Night, the League of Women Voters moderator. I also want to thank all in attendance tonight, including current and past Rochelle Park Board of Education members, candidates, candidate, Rochelle Park community, Midland School administrators, faculty and staff that are here. I have been a resident of Rochelle Park for thirty-four years. My wife Karen and I are proud of our three children, all major in Rochelle Park and graduates of Midland School Number One. All three graduated high school, two have graduated from college, and our youngest just started Montclair State. I am running for the Board of Education to continue the course of maintaining a positive, stable and challenging learning environment for all that attend and work here. The Board of Education with my help is providing thorough and efficient education for all Rochelle Park students while remaining both fiscally responsible and transparent to the taxpayers and communities of Rochelle Park. Seven years ago, as requested, I took an active role in our school's reconstruction needs by volunteering my time to a referendum committee made up of fourteen residents. As a matter of fact, I made almost one of them. As part of this committee, I was responsible for helping our Board of Education and higher professionals introduce, form and deliver well-needed and received construction referendum. Despite pointing out there were two line items we could have saved over one billion dollars on that, I had brought to the attention of the Board of Ed at the time, I was advised that the taxpayers, you, would not want free air conditioning from a high-efficiency heating system in this building because it was not on the referendum question that the taxpayers to have free air conditioning. Despite these differences, the construction referendum project, it provided many needed upgrades to this building. I was not a Board member at that time, but I soon became one. Once on the Board, I made sure I put 100% of my efforts into confirming this district would receive what it was promised from outside vendors, architects and professionals to the best of my ability by sharing my advice and concerns with fellow Board of Ed members that maybe did not completely understand. There were times this district would have paid additional money for architectural drawings, which did not happen because the Board of Ed members saw this when it was pointed out. When the pandemic hit this district, all I could remember were my words said in a public Board of Ed meeting seven years ago, which were, "What if we had to face a major viral outbreak in the future of some sort?" At that time, we had a choice for heating with free air conditioning and hospital quality air filtration for every classroom at no extra cost to this district. We would have been prepared, but remember, I was advised that the taxpayers of Rochelle Park would not agree with AC because it wasn't part of the referendum question on the ballot. Fast forward to the recent pandemic, we, like many other districts, were caught unprepared. I didn't dwell on this past, but rather with my training in mechanical engineering and HVAC, I helped the administration get the technology to this district. It's one of the first in the state of New Jersey. Within days, we had answers and implemented a hydroponization system capable of eradicating any and all pathogens floating in our school air. To optimize the system, we had to circulate the air and close the windows. Because of this, window units were now needed in the classrooms for air conditioning. So we got AC anyway, just not as energy-efficient, and without a $250,000 PSE engine rebate we could have had back then. With regards to all of our ongoing concerns for building safety from intruders, I am very proud to be on the Board that votes and brought the first SRO police officer to this district full-time. Looking forward, I believe I have the strengths to offer the Board of Education and our community, which are experience in owning and operating a successful construction, a mechanical company in mechanical engineering, practical experience in mechanical engineering, plumbing, electrical systems, HVAC, which continue to benefit Midland School by way of my advising and collaborating with our maintenance team in our board meetings and our outside professionals. I also have a true understanding of the community of Rochelle Park from many different perspectives, like being a former member of the Rochelle Park zoning board, coaching recreational soccer for twenty years, as well as other recreational sports, participation in fundraiser, scouts, church functions, and during times of disaster, Rochelle Park aiding for reconstruction to many residents after five major floods. My participation in all these activities has brought me into contact with our diverse population and the different needs of our residents, parents and students. These perspectives continue to make me, help me make decisions for our school that are in the best interest of all involved, students, teachers, administration, taxpayers, young and old. My character strengths include honesty, persistence and the willingness and patience to research information to make informed decisions for the district. I have the willingness to listen and discuss real information and ideas, but using these experiences, I believe I will be able to properly provide and fail my efforts to support problem-solving with other members of the Board of Education, administration and Midland School faculty. In closing, if you really know who I am... I'm passionate about what I believe in for the best for this school. I am dedicated to the children, but always respectful of other opinions. If I am in disagreement with another, the path I take is to develop my education. I will always work hard and offer a solution rather than just complain and disagree. Complaints without solutions offered are a true waste of our time. Our students' time spent in Midland School is limited and valuable indeed, as many of us know in the blink of an eye, this time when time is gone. With your support, I plan to make the most of this elected position for our students and community. I look forward to answering any of your questions you may have this evening and in the future. And as Albert Einstein said, "The only stupid question is the question never asked." Thank you for your time.
I apologize for allowing Mr. Truwinski to take much too much time for his opening. We will have Elaine Raynaud give you even time if she wants. You can embarrass her.
I don't need all that time. I really liked it, Max.
And I forgot to mention that the reason Jen is sitting up here holding up different cards is she's keeping time. The yellow card will indicate there's 30 seconds left for the speaker, and then a red card, and I may jump up and grab the microphone away in the future, but it's hard with a little microphone, right?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the PTO for sponsoring Candidates Night. I would like to thank our moderator for moderating this event, and I'd like to thank each and every one of you for coming out. Hopefully, at the end of Candidates Night, you might be able to make an informed decision. I am Elaine Grace LeBeur Raynaud, and I am honored to be a candidate running in the November 8th election for the Rochelle Park Board of Education. I came into Rochelle Park in 1974, so happy to become a teacher in Sacred Heart School on Rochelle Avenue. It was there that I had my first fourth-grade classroom. Soon after, an eighth-grade position opened there, and I moved on up. Well, at that time, Sacred Heart shared time of Midland, and it is here that I met Lenny LeBeur. A job opportunity opened up at Midland. I applied, became the seventh and eighth-grade science teacher, and then Lenny and I were married. After quite a few years, we were blessed with our son, our only child, LJ. I have been a teacher at Midland School for the past forty-five years, retiring in very good health this July 1st, 2022. I have always been a middle school science teacher from the day I walked through the front door. It did not take me long to become involved in many of the school activities, and soon I accepted a leadership position with the Rochelle Park Education Association. I held leadership positions within the association well over twenty-five years or more. See, helping people is what I enjoy doing. It is what I love to do. Lenny LeBeur served as a Board member, and I served as a teacher and association president. We proved our integrity to our respective groups and carried on. When tragedy struck my life and I lost my only son in 2003, it was my family and the Rochelle Park community who provided the lights in my dark and very cold tunnel. After Lenny passed away a very short time after, it was the community again that let the way for me to remain productive and active. Tragedy struck my life for a third time when Bob Raynaud passed away very unexpectedly, and the town saw me through the tunnel for the third time. For me, Midland is and so much a part of who I am. Shortly, very shortly after retirement, I think it was at my retirement dinner that I heard there were going to be two open seats on the Board of Education. I knew Matt Truwinski would run again, and I thought to myself, "Wow, I've got the time. I'm so accustomed to working with the Board. I've got some of the knowledge. I don't think there's an educator by trade on the Board presently. Maybe I should run." Well, I don't think I gave it five minutes. I announced that I was going to run for the Board of Education. I circulated my petition immediately and became an official candidate. To make a long story short, my immediate family consists of my two sisters, Maria and Anna, my brother-in-law Bruce, and they live locally. My sister Anna has three children, my sister Mia has one son, and Lenny's family that lives right here in Rochelle Park. I am not affiliated with any political party, and truly I'm running because I am passionate about education and I want to stay connected to education, but in a different capacity. I have no agenda. I am running to give my time, my energy to a township that gave so much to Elaine Grace LeBeur Raynaud. I love what I do. I love to be a part of a group that works together for the greater good. I am not running to climb any stepping stones. For me, becoming the trustee on the Board of Education is an honor I could only dream of achieving. I am proud to sit next to Matt Truwinski, who, like me, is running to serve the children and the residents of Rochelle Park. I feel I can bring to the Board my knowledge of working in the classroom, working closely with administration, working closely with the faculty and staff. My ability to lead is simply by my example and my willingness to work hard to achieve the goals the Board sets to attain. I wish all the candidates well, and I am hopeful that at the end of this meeting, this will help you, the voters, make the tough decisions. Thank you.
I'm going to "we." This is from Alfonso Santiago and Rafael Gomez, the Common Sense Candidates for Board of Education. We are excited to hear that there is interest in hearing about all platforms for the election coming in November. As the only candidates that have children presently in Midland School and eventually moving on to high school, we have a very personal interest in seeing our school system succeed. We felt compelled to do something about the opportunities we offer the kids of our district. We see that while our tax expenditures are increasing, the results of those increased costs are not realized. Our schools seem to be better educationally and financially years ago. We are not sure where our school went wrong, but we are stepping forward to do something about it. There are many complex elements running a school system, but we are sure all of them can be improved somewhat. We recognize that the funds necessary for the classroom might not be getting into the classroom with our students. Sometimes that imbalance can create a difficult work environment, leading to morale issues with teachers and staff. Without having more detailed information, some of which certainly has already been conveyed to members of the Board or former teachers and union representatives at Midland, it would be impossible to answer a few of the questions that would have been discussed tonight, a clear disadvantage to our candidacies. Our main concern is that this forum could never be a neutral expression of candidate goals when elected to office. That is why we are not participating tonight. We will certainly answer the questions that you presented to us. We will send them both directly to you and post them on our campaign website for all interested parties. Please do not interpret this as disinterest in participating in an open exchange of ideas for the future of our children. We will meet with any organization, parents, teachers, administrators and residents, and would like to do so at a time that is convenient for them. Anybody who would, anyone who would like to do so or discuss the concerns with us can reach us at rpcommonsenscandidates@gmail.com. We will continue to attempt to earn each and every resident's vote by discussing our concerns directly on their doorsteps, where they can express their ideas without pressure from other members of our community. Thank you for your time and all that you provide for the parents of this district. Sincerely, Alfonso Santiago and Rafael Gomez. Okay, now we have questions. The, I'm assuming that the PTO developed fifteen questions that were sent to all four candidates, giving them sufficient time to do research and write out answers. The format for this evening is that one of the candidates will choose a question from the fifteen in this bowl and have two minutes to answer the question, which I will be, and then the other candidate will have two minutes to answer the same question. If there had been four candidates here, we would not have had the same timing, but they're not here. So we're going to ask Ms. Raynaud to choose a question, and if you want to hand it to me. Read it. And you'll have two minutes to answer this one, and it doesn't have a number on it, so I don't know if you can find it in your notes. Do you feel the lines of communication between families and the Board of Education are adequate? If not, how do you plan to improve communication and participation with parents and other caregivers?
Can we keep the question? I know it's a lengthy one.
It's number fifteen.
Number fifteen. Okay.
I know that the Board of Education meetings are advertised on the Rochelle Park Midland School website, well in advance of the meeting. But in today's world, maybe the meetings could be televised, or maybe the meetings could be taped and then put up either on the website or somewhere in which people cannot make the meeting can be a part of the meeting or at least hear what's going on. I would also assume that, though I know definitely that our superintendent puts out all forms of communication, she is spot-on with communication. She puts letters up on the websites informing the parents of what they need to know. So I would like, if elected, to have the Board perhaps look into alternative ways of visualizing the Board of Education meetings, but also like that for the township community. I think that would be an excellent idea, particularly perhaps if the Board cannot get out, they can do it, they can be a part that way too. Thank you.
Okay, communication. Being on the Board of Ed for nearly six years, I have seen the outreach of our administration with our, in conjunction with the Board of Education, through email to organizations. What I'm, what I think the best way though is to achieve more participation in the Board of Education meetings because it's hard for people to get there. I feel that there should be, we are doing now, or should be more inclusive events where, like recognition, which we do already with the recognition for the honor roll and for the students that we bring them in, but there should be more, if we can do more inclusivity with events with, I come up, in the regular student life, bring them into the Board of Education meeting that would draw them in. The other thing I would like to say is to reestablish the bridge between the PTO and Board of Education. I think that's been lost for quite a while, or it just seems like as a business, we haven't had that strong communication in a while. I think we need to reestablish that, maybe have a liaison from the Board of Education go to the PTO meeting, and I haven't seen PTO in a while, but I think it'll be important to have them back. I would also recommend that the PTO, and because the questions are coming from the PTO, that there obviously is a lot of input coming into these questions, is give us your suggestions. We want to hear what suggestions you may have, we're reaching out for communication and breaching that barrier. We're always willing to listen and we're always willing to try something different. So please bring your, bring your suggestions to our meeting. Thank you.
How can a board, when faced with differing opinions on major topics, work together to achieve common goals for the district? You have two minutes, Mr. Cameron.
A board, when faced with differing opinions on major topics, and foremost, need a leader that can help bring the facts out to the table, which I feel I've provided to this board. I have been the acting president in one necessary step in, but consider myself an equal member to this board. I preserve everyone's right to voice their opinions and information at board meetings and at public meetings, no matter who they are. If we lead with the facts and enter into discussions and remind each other what our goal is, we seem to keep on target. This has been true for quite a while now. We rarely will all agree, but we always get our points across. Thank you.
I love this question. Thank you, Mr. Truwinski. Differing opinions bring fresh ideas. It's good to have multiple perspectives. When people do not think all in the same way, it can bring about new ideas and new avenues of achieving things. These changes can truly help the Board operate more efficiently and improve the functionality of the Board itself. The ultimate goal: come to a consensus of opinion through discussions and ultimately come to terms with what is best for the group you are serving. I believe that differing opinions promote problem-solving. Through discussion, the Board can problem-solve and figure out how to come to an agreement. I know not every decision will be an easy decision to make, but the Board must allow for ways to move through this, allowing to give his or her their own thoughts. Once again, the key here is respect. Respect of one another, and do not take a differing of opinion as personal. Use the differing of opinions as a way to see new perspectives and realize that the best solution may not be the one you suggested. Compromise, respect, keep an eye in mind. If I believe that the Board has been thorough, fair and fulfilled the duties on the matter, I would publicly... In preparing for tonight, I came upon this quote: Listening isn't just hearing, it requires the willingness to entertain other viewpoints, especially opposing ones. Ram shalom. Thank you.
Oh. Oh, I hope I picked a good one. What teacher training or preparation do you feel is lacking in our school district? How would you address this? Should teacher quality be tied to student performance?
Number twelve.
As you know, I am a teacher. And I am proud to say that in this district, it's not lacking. But I'll read my question, answer to my question. I do not believe that the Board of Education determines teacher training. It is the superintendent of schools that is responsible for the effective operation of the school district, for the administration of all instructional activities, for the business operational, for the business operational matters of the district, for advising and making recommendations to the Board of Education with respect to the implementation of all that directly impacts the district. The superintendent is the liaison between the staff and the Board of Education. The superintendent advocates for the interests of the school district and the community. That is why your superintendent should be communicative, multi-skilled, visual, ambitious, committed. Oh, did I just describe Susan O'Leary? I think I did. The superintendent sets the gold standard for academic excellence, along with the plans to achieve it. A superintendent should be highly visible, approachable, be able to avert emergencies and crises, a good negotiator, be able to handle the parents with sensitivity and respect. Dedication to the district, for so long this district lacked consistency. We have it now. Remember, the superintendent oversees the daily operations and long-range planning of the district. Good leadership within the superintendent and by the superintendent is a must-have. Thank you.
When our administration hires a new teacher, they are coming to our district, prepared and well-trained. Our responsibility is to carry this forward through our professional development days, which in recent years has grown. The district focus has shifted to bring more in-house professional development rather than going outside. For example, use of technology. The administration asks the teachers who would be interested to become trainers in the use of technology, like any of the Google Labs, et cetera, and the administration will send those individuals to be trained, who come back and train the rest of the faculty and now become site experts. In Dr. Sue Denobly's words, and I quote, "We make sure when we become rich in our own resources, such as some faculty becoming trainers, experts in a topic, and bring that back to stay as in-house coaching." Here's another example. The literacy program is a job-invented coaching model, where the outside provider comes in and works live in the classroom with the teacher during the class. By the way, we're using all title fund grant money for this professional development. And there's a second part to the question, which I would say, yes, I do agree there should be some degree of teacher effectiveness and accountability tied to student performance over time, showing the track record. Thank you.
Board members must at times decide to support or to oppose controversial issues that have vocal supporters on both sides, specifically transgendered bathrooms and critical race theory. What process would you use and with who would you consult in making such decisions?
First of all, this district does not teach critical race theory. This is a college course that is a philosophical course, doesn't belong here, and it's not. Board members have to apply by our Code of Ethics only day for public oath. In those, I'm going to read them quickly for you. The first one is, "I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education, and court order changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures." The next Code of Ethics that would apply for a board member would be, "I will make decision in terms of the educational welfare of the children and will seek to develop and maintain individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sects, or social standing." One other that applies, "I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members." These are Code of Ethics that we have to live by as a Board of Ed member. And when we become an elected official, a peer elected volunteer on this board, we have to swear to a public oath. And once we do that, these apply. Thank you.
Board members must make controversial decisions. How would you make them? Although this question would allow me to think it through, basically the answer is easy. All state mandates must be implemented by the Board of Education. It is the role and the job of the superintendent to outline to the Board of Education the way or method of implementation. Whether I agree with a mandate or not is irrelevant. If it is a state mandate, and funding must not be jeopardized. If funding is jeopardized, then the taxpayer assumes the cost. If it is non-state mandated, then that's different. The Board of Education should hear from the community, listen to their views, then discuss it as a whole board, refer to the superintendent, and come to a decision. Always be sure that the ultimate decision is fair, was brought about in a fair way. If I would dissent from the consensus of the vote, I would have no problem qualifying my vote to the people. I believe in that. Thank you. I'm sure I'm picking it.
Please state two or three major goals you want our school district to accomplish during your term of office, and describe the steps you would take to see that those goals are achieved.
Number one, I would like to see the Township Committee and the Board of Education work together in harmony for the betterment of the township. Yes, there will always be differences, and the differences of opinion can be good, but at the end of the day, I would hope that the Township Committee and the Board of Education would have one goal to me, and that is what is best for the residents of the township of Rochelle Park, and include children in the term resident. The last time I looked up the term resident, I found in the dictionary, "A person who lives permanently or long-term." That, my friends, includes the children. I am proud to say that our mayor, Karen Moscow, is my former student, that members of the township have been former students, even Board of Education members and administrators of Midland School. They have been my former students. I know these people. I know they are good people. Can I offer you a plan now on how to achieve this goal? Well, yes, you can elect me to the Board of Education, and I will implement my plan, but I can only tell you that I am a person who works hard, is willing to learn, is willing to listen, not afraid to speak her mind, and a woman who is willing to compromise. I know that the Township and the Board of Education have the same goal, and I know it is for creating an atmosphere in Rochelle Park that includes all of the people. To do what is best for our township, we need to work together to meet that goal. Politics should not be a part of the Board of Education. It has no place in education, and regardless of political party, once elected, the official needs to do what is best for the residents. I ask for that opportunity to do what is best. My plan: to continue to work with the board, the administration, the staff, the parents, the community, the students, to ensure that the lines of communication are always open. The board is there to listen to the people, to hear them, and ultimately decide what is best for the community. This Board of Education has always been open to listening and acting. I will continue that trend. As I said before, I have no agenda, but I might have a chance to serve a community that has given so much. The lines of communication should never be shut down, should never be closed. Number two, keeping the school moving forward. I believe that the path Midland School is traveling, perhaps someday, and in the near future, it may be a blue ribbon school. As far as I'm concerned, the wheels are in motion now. Achieving that goal will bring status to the community, personal gratification to each student, parent, and resident. Blue ribbon status will bring enhanced value to the assessed value of the homes that you are living in, right here in Rochelle Park. We are moving in that direction now. Let's continue it. Thank you.
I'm usually not so leaky when it comes to timekeeping.
I'm sorry.
But...
Thank you, Mr. Truinsky, on the opening statement.
My goals as a board member are in alignment with our board goals that we formulated, and I'll share the hell makes this happen. We hired a wellness coordinator with grant funds at no extra cost to the district. To this point, we have caught serious state attention, and Dr. Sue Denobly was invited to present this topic to the New Jersey Association of School Administrators. Our second board goal, which is in alignment with mine, has been safety for our school facility. We quite often look at and have added very meaningful safety upgrades to this building envelope. We have also added the first ever resource police officer, who already has made a school community difference, to which I am very proud to be a part of. We did this in conjunction with the town, which I am grateful. Our third goal was a long-range facility plan, which is now evident and coming true. From the new basketball multipurpose courts and pavilion, expansion of the faculty lot assumed to be completely overhauled, revitalization and renewal in the future of the Blaine Street parking lot with an elevated sidewalk to separate the Midland School field from the vehicles for safety, upgrades to the science lab, and the addition of self-contained classes in this district. These are all part of goals that are in alignment and in alignment with our board goals. Thank you.
How would you improve learning conditions in a very small school district with limited resources? Two minutes.
Well, some of this is, most of this is already in place, is the way I say it. Extended school day program for additional learning and support is in place already. Transition program or summer program is also in place for those students who are identified and in need. This is paid for with use of grant funds as well. Our administration has reviewed the master schedule and has added three new courses for Midland School students: civics, financial literacy, career exploration. And with revamping the master schedule, eliminating the alternating A D days, they were able to increase instructional time for English and math for grades six through eight. More instructional time for English and math was one of the main sticking points I ran on when I first, I was asked for when I first ran for the Board of Elections in 2016. The administration has implemented a new model of co-teaching, where English and math teachers are supporting instruction in science and social studies. We have to thank the teachers for the receptiveness on this change, for the betterment of the student. They embraced this idea. So basically, as an example, a math teacher will be in the science class, but students pointing out what math principles they've learned are actually being used in the science class. This is going to be a game changer in the district. Thank you.
Much of what Mr. Truinsky said is exactly what I was going to reiterate, so what I'll do is just, I will summarize. I would support the recommendations of the superintendent. No Board of Education member can remedy this situation on their own accord. The superintendent would recommend to the Board of Education the path, and the board would make it happen. This is the job of the superintendent and the administrative team to create the plan of action. Thank you.
In what ways have you been of service to public education prior to becoming a candidate in this election? In what other ways, church, clubs, service organizations, have you been involved in service to the community?
Number two.
You know, I never disclose my age, so, you know, when I discuss many years, it's really not that long, okay? I have always believed that Midland School is the heart and soul of Rochelle Park. Being a teacher in the district and living in the township as well, has been a way of allowing me to serve the community from my Midland School position. As association president, with the association, we reached out... we reached out to the community whenever a need arose. We collected money and necessities for the people who are most hurt by flooding. We organized a breakfast one year to assist the residents hit by Hurricane Floyd. I was never so proud as when I was the eighth grade advisor. Through that role, I was able with my classes to touch both the school community and the residents in a number of ways. My class fundraised for the first standing flagpole in front of the school. We also purchased a separate Midland School flag. We fundraised for the lion decal to be painted in the gym. Through fundraising, we defrayed the cost of the yearbook and were able to produce the first hardcover yearbook, and I thank Mrs. Haynes for that as well. We always fundraised to present the school a gift that would benefit all the children of the school. I also served on the referendum committee when the additions and renovations were being researched and discussed. I've always been involved with the community through Midland School. Thank you.
So I have been of service to public education, more specifically this Midland School number one, by volunteering my time again on the referendum committee seven years ago, which aided the district in securing the needed funding by way of referendum vote for major upgrades to this building. The next year, I was elected to the Board of Education by the voters in Rochelle Park, 2016. Decided to stay on and ran a contested for a second term, to which I am serving the end of right now. With regards to servicing the community, I currently am and have been for the last five years, vice president of Rochelle Park Soccer. And prior to that, 20 years, I was on the field as a head coach for various teams. During my early year years coaching soccer, I also coached Rochelle Park baseball for three years, sacred art basketball for eight years. I volunteered in our local Cub Scouts for five years, was a member years before when there was a PTA and currently now the PTO. I have been a strong supporter of all local organizations since the 1990s. In this town, by way of sponsoring teams or donating money to nonprofit causes for the benefit, community, and the children. Lastly, I was appointed to the zoning board in Rochelle Park for a two-year term, to which I served, and others, together, looked after the best interest of the town and its residents first. While on the sport, I and others wanted to deny yet another billboard from being erected on Route 80, but it was in litigation going through due to our lack of town ordinances in place. However, we were able to negotiate $2,500 as a donation to the Rochelle Park Recreation Department from this developer. We also denied an application for a five-story cube snore behind Matthews Baseball Field, behind Arlie Davidson. This building would tower over the field and cast long-lasting shadows over the play area and residence for many months of the year, with nothing more than a monetary gain for the owner of the applicant, zero for the children in our residence. Thank you.
What are some major issues that you believe our school district is currently facing? How would you like the district to deal with those issues?
Thank you. The number one issue facing all school districts is inflation. For example, bus companies raised their costs 120%. Increase in energy costs are exorbitant. Medical, insurance, health benefit costs are up 15.1%. Since the pandemic, cost of substitutes, subsequent teachers, has inflated $90, from $90 to $120 per day, and I can go on. To deal with these issues, I would like to do more smart sharing and continue creating innovative ways of offsetting costs, such as our currently shared transportation with Maywood for 27 students enrolled in vocational technical and the academies at an approximate savings of $3,000 per student, or $81,000 to this district. Another way of offsetting our budget is to ensure all parents who qualify complete their free and reduced lunch application to our business office, which helps our Title I grant in state aid. I am proud as a board member that the school district has been making sure we reach out to these parents, fill these forms, increase our state aid. Continue building our in-house special education program and making it available to outside districts. Currently, we have a director of special services, which helped us create self-contained classes 3K through eighth grade, which give us the ability to keep special education students in district and saves us approximately $80,000 per student, plus approximately $20,000 for their transportation per student. We have room at all grade levels, but we already have five enrolled. Monitor and continue residency checks on current enrollment. For new registrations, they will go through a new inspection check before enrollment. Thank you.
With this question, I combined questions three and four. Every school district in this great country has faced challenges as a result of the recent pandemic, but challenges just as ever again. Each district, I am sure, can specifically elaborate on their own. There are challenges faced by the country as a whole. As a result, we have mental health challenges, loss of instructional time in classrooms, test score and educational gaps, learning disruptions. Clearly, there's work to be done by the individual school district. The challenges for the school community agree. Our district instituted summer learning programs, establishing co-teaching in the classrooms, which allow the teachers to reach more students during a single-class period, more effective uses of paraprofessionals, but keeping all materials in the building supplying current. We need to continue to move forward, utilize our educational reforms, and continue on the path led by our superintendent, executed by our teachers and staff. But lighting this path is our Board of Education. For every weakness, there is a strength. We will continue to identify and remediate. Major issues facing our district? One, educating the child. The academics a top priority, but meeting the social and emotional needs of the child, critically important. Two, meeting school security and safety needs. We're doing it. Three, meeting the needs of the taxpayer. Four, keeping the morale in school high among teachers, staff, and our students, filling the deficits. Thank you.
Oh, I like that question. Why do you want to be a school board member?
I was hoping for that question. Why do I want to become a school board member? I'm passionate about education. I enjoyed my 45-plus years as a New Jersey educator. Leaving the classroom was a tough decision, but I knew I did not want to stray far from education. When I heard there were two openings on the Board of Education, I knew I found my next calling. Being a school board member will allow me to bring to the Board my experiences of teaching new students in the classroom. It will allow me to become a part of the educational system in another capacity. I realize the role of the Board of Education is to set policy and to oversee the financial responsibilities of the school district to the taxpayers. I feel I can have an impact on the Board by bringing to the table my years of experience in the classroom, my years as the Rochelle Park Education Association, of which I am so proud. My years of working with the administration and the Board to create and maintain a positive school-community climate. Our school, Midland School, is traveling in a positive direction. It has worked through and overcome difficult challenges, particularly brought on by the pandemic. My goal is to work effectively and efficiently and cooperatively with the Board, with the administration, with the parents, the staff, and the students. I realize the utmost importance is to keep the district strong, current, and financially responsible. Thank you.
I would like to continue being a school board member for the following reasons. To help encourage and maintain a safe, positive, stable, and challenging learning environment for all that attend this school and work here. As part of the negotiation committee just this year, it was pointed out to me, this was the first time the R E D A voted unanimously in favor of their contract. Reestablishing a lost connection, like I said before, with the PTO by sending representatives to their meetings and asking them again to attend ours on a regular basis, I think is vital to the support for their parental efforts and our school community. In the past, there has been a concern with administrative consistency in the district and stability, and this always seemed to be difficult to maintain for some reason, or at least since I've been here. I believe positive and non-politically backed candidates, such as myself and Elaine Rayno, will continue to provide this inviting environment of positivity and stability. Because of this, educators and administrators want to remain here. If elected, I plan to continue being part of this direction. Again, I'd like to see the construction of a STEM wing. I'd like to follow up on the plans, like to be or follow up on the plans in place to complete the rehabilitation of the faculty lot, now that our traffic pattern seems to be working better. I also, again, want to see the William Street parking lot rehabilitation. I want to be part of this board as well to further explore lights, which we are in the process of for Midland Field, and maybe someday, soccer fields and baseball fields that are turf. For years, I envisioned a solar roof over the parking lot out front to protect us in the weather and provide an offset to rising electrical costs. I would love to see that come to fruition as well. Lastly, I want to see this district become a blue ribbon school and state aid early. Thank you.
What are your thoughts regarding the implementation of New Jersey's new content for teaching comprehensive health and physical education?
My first thoughts on this topic, as far as a board of a member, I cannot interpret my own opinion. The New Jersey Department of Education puts out our curriculum, and the local districts must implement or face the consequence. Midland School is implementing the health curriculum, taking a conservative approach to keeping in line with NJ State mandate, while preserving the right of parents to review with the administration and respectfully observing individuals' right to opting out of section. Should the Board of Education not support the state mandated health curriculum, we as board members are in violation of our code of ethic to start. We would lose our state funding, to which the taxpayers will incur the additional cost. Full add. Thank you.
Firstly, the new health curriculum is mandated by the state of New Jersey to be taught in its public schools. I do not want to be not compliant with the state's curriculum, and I know that the school district is in compliance and our state funding is dependent on the implementation of the curriculum. If we were to lose state funding, which is substantial amounts dollar amount, the taxpayers of Rochelle Park would be forced to make up that absurd amount of money in the form of taxes. I have been to public meetings all summer and attended the September public meeting. I have not heard, nor have I seen, an outcry of parents protesting the curriculum. Some parents, I saw and heard to read at the public meeting in September, questioned the superintendent about the health curriculum. The protest seems to be coming from the Board of Education candidates running under the Republican banner, along with the Republican candidate for the township committee. It is those candidates knocking on the doors, expressing their opinion of the health curriculum. Going door to door, preaching that the curriculum enhances radical sex education is simply untrue. The superintendent has been very clear to the parents via letter and via public meeting presentation that a parent has the right to opt out their child of the curriculum of particular standards of the curriculum. Any parent can ask for an explanation of a specific standard and how that standard will be addressed in the classroom. The curriculum, which is posted online, gives the standard, which is the learning objective. The suggested tasks, which give an overview of how the objective will be delivered. The learning assessment to connect the objective to the task and the materials or resources to enhance the concept. In addition, key vocabulary is also stated. Parents can look at the objective and decide if they want to expose their child to the lesson. The opt-out sheet is very easy to fill out, and it will be handled by the school and by the teacher with integrity and respect. What I like about the way the curriculum is written is that it's clear and defined. Parents can understand the concept, the methodology, and how that lesson will be delivered. No one, especially the district, is forcing any parent to do anything. The Board of Education and superintendent has made it clear you can opt out of a standard and not the entire curriculum. Please, I urge you to look at the curriculum. Look at the world we live in. Decide what is right for your child. Trust in the teachers that you know your, that know your children and have their children as their top priority. Teachers like me will treat your children as they would want their children treated in the classroom. I've lived by that. We want to teach our children to respect people, to understand that all people are not the same, but nonetheless, we respect the diversity among people. Thank you.
Do you have any specific changes you want to see made in our school's curriculum?
One number check.
Six.
Sorry.
Oh. My answer to this question is easy. Midland School is guided by our superintendent, and the curriculum is taught to the children and students by an outstanding group of educators, Midland's finest, the teachers. The teachers under the direction of the superintendent and the director of curriculum have the pulse of the educational needs in the various subject areas. I, as a Board of Education member, would have my trust in the administration and the teachers to educate. to educate the children in the most current manner. The Board of Education needs to make sure that the teachers have the tools to educate the children. The Board of Education does not teach the material. It sees that the teachers have the materials necessary to deliver the instruction, adopt the curriculum, which in turn sets the appropriate syllabus for each. Thank you.
So, again, as a board member, we don't make changes to the curriculum. The New Jersey Department of Education does. They send the curriculum to all the districts. It's up to the districts how they implement the curriculum. That's it. I'm not going any further on that.
What is your perception of the current working and learning climate in our school district? Do you have any ideas on how to ensure a positive working and learning environment in our district?
The current working and learning climate, I feel, has been very positive, stable and challenging. Based on my visit during back-to-school night, I feel the parents that attended learned this firsthand. In my last four years on the Board of Education, I can't remember the last time we have seen any real RPEA issues with the board or the administrator. To ensure a positive working and learning environment in Midland School, I would not change anything at the moment. The administration of faculty are working seamlessly and have identified and implemented teaching ideas and techniques that are turning the tide in this district for the best we can be. And all have been very receptive to making this happen. All I have. Thank you.
From what I have learned from the public meeting, the Rochelle Park Board of Education and the Rochelle Park Education Association amicably and recently settled their contract. I am sure they negotiated over several months, but I would assume, and I do believe I'm correct in assuming, that both sides were happy with the settlement. Settling the contract in an amicable way through talking, meetings, discussions, and keeping the lines of communication open. Nothing better. It speaks for itself. The district is moving in the right direction. Let's keep it moving in that direction. Thank you.
What are some of the strengths and weaknesses you see in our district? I know, Ms. Reyno, you combined it with question four.
Yes, I did. So I basically answered, I mean, if you want me to repeat it, I combined my three and four together. Right.
Out of all to be considered our top strengths, I see in this district is our current Board of Education members' individuality they bring to this board, our current administration, RPEA staff, and the PTO involvement on behalf of the student body. The willingness to come together and work as a team, especially when under pressure for the best interest of the school, could not have been more apparent than when the pandemic hit. Administrators crossed over roles to help others. Some donated their time without seeking additional compensation. Board of Ed members met on the drop of a hat for emergency meeting upon emergency meeting. We are fortunate to have Board of Ed members with background training in finance, policy, and regulations. A retired police lieutenant, who also is a longtime firefighter, and myself with an educated background in problem-solving, as a mechanical engineer and tradesman. We always put all of our ideas together and at work for the school's safety anytime a new condition would arise with no hesitation. The main weakness I see in the district is the lack of cooperation with regards to the township for protecting the school funding with incoming housing developments. In 2019, I and other Board of Ed members took part in a couple of short-lived meetings where we had voiced our concerns about the granting of a pilot program to a developer on the Safe Street. For those of you who don't know, the word "pilot" is an acronym for "payment in lieu of taxes", more specifically, property taxes. Pilot program does not send property taxes to the school district unless the township officials vote to allocate some of this money to move forward. Plus, it's a percentage of a reduced amount of taxes paid on that property. So basically, the school loses funding completely from this project unless the township agrees to send it. Despite a town flyer sent to all residents from the developer of the Safe Street claiming there is an agreement of some sort, I can assure you, there is no such developer or township agreement in place with the Board of Education. This is a big concern due to the enormity of this housing project. Due to our concern, the Board of Ed has drafted a safety net agreement to help offset and protect the taxpayer from additional enrollment to Midland School based on a dollar amount per student we would collect from this project. At some point, Midland School will need to increase its size to accommodate the extra students. And where will this construction money come from? Will the taxpayers fund additional construction due to the increased housing? Thank you.
Are there questions? There have been originally thoughts that we could take questions from the audience, but I think we've heard quite a bit from the candidates, and it's unfortunate that the other two candidates aren't here to answer any questions specifically. So we're going to go to closing statements, and I'm going to have Ms. Reyno. Two minutes.
I don't think I'll be that long.
I'm Elaine Grace Laborino, and I am running in the November 8, 2022 election for a trustee seat on the Rochelle Park Board of Education. As stated, I have been a resident in the township for over forty-five years, and I've taught in the township for many of those years, if not more. It has been my honor to be a part of and touched so many different lives of the children, parents, and residents of the township. I hope, besides academics, I have taught by example. It is no secret that education and educating and assisting people is where my passion lies. They say, "When you do what you love, you will never work a day in your life." That quote is exactly as I lived. I never said to my family, "Have a good day. I am going to work." I always said, "Have a good day. I'm going to school, and I love you." It is no secret my life has been centered around education and educating children in both the academics and the preparation for their life experiences. I want to continue to be part of the educational process, but in a different way. It is my hope to continue to contribute to the township by giving my time, my energy, and my desire to serve by becoming a board trustee. Ultimately, that will be up to you, the voters, on November 8. I am not a political candidate. I chose not to take monies for this campaign from any political organization, from any organization, from any person. I am running on my record. I am running on my energy. I am running on my passion. I am most proud to place my signs on the lawns next to Matt Truinsky's signs. Matt holds so many values that I hold close and live by. I would love to be a part of this board that is working to move the district and its children forward. As I said before, I see a Blue Ribbon School in sight, and I want to be part of attaining that goal. But mostly, I want to be a part of giving back. Rochelle Park, its children, the parents, the residents have given me so very much. I will continue to hold my head high as we near the end of this campaign process. I make no promises to you except to be true to myself and to give you all that I have. I believe in respect. I will give it because that's what I want. I want to receive it. It's the way I am. It's the way I live. As a candidate, please judge me on what I can offer, on what I can add to this board. Judge me for what I am aiming to do for the children and the taxpayers of the town. I wish all the candidates the best of luck, and I ask you to consider me and Matt Truinsky as you decide the best fits for the Board of Education. Elaine Reyno does not fit in anyone else's mold, just her own. Thank you for coming. For those of you who have shown me support, whether you're voting for me or not, it's irrelevant. Thank you. I can't thank you enough for giving me some of your time this evening. Please enjoy the rest of the evening, have a safe trip home, and hopefully, I will see you on November 8. Good night and be well.
Once again, I'd like to thank all of the tenants tonight, and of course, the PTO for hosting this event, and the League of Women Voters for moderating. I need to say, I have no political agenda, no financial backing, and no promises to any groups or organizations, much like Elaine Reyno. I need to touch upon a couple of things. I'm going to move my speaker around my closing speech. One of them is, I need to address this tax increase. I talked about inflation earlier on. For example, like I said, the bus companies raising 120% increase in energy costs, medical health insurance costs, benefits up 15.1%, and on and on. We had an added enrollment increase of fifty students in two years. We, as a township, lost eight homes paying property taxes beyond shop rent. We keep up with our scheduled payments here for the referendum bond or loan. This year, we paid down $300,000 of that. We gave back to the township $250,000 for about the eighth year, I believe, which is about $2 million. But we have nothing to show for this refund to the taxpayer other than saying it to you now. With all this, the tax increase to the average SS home of $336,000 would be approximately $325 per calendar year, not per quarter. This is an approved budget by the state and county keeping below a 2% cap Board of Education is allowed up to by law. Besides that, our capital reserve account maintains reserves as $200,000 for emergencies. In the meantime, the, I believe, our $95,000 increase in the town deficit, besides the taxes they got, besides the COVID relief money they got, rolling in 700, between 530,000 in COVID relief money and 250,000 of our dollars that went back to them. Again, we have nothing to show for it. Their budget looks better than ours. We have a lot to show for it as we walk around this district though, and you can see what we're doing here. So again, Elaine and I are running on the same ideas, the same principles, and neither one of us are looking for any backing. We don't need any favors. We don't need any political organizations. Just want to make that very, very clear. If a political organization gets a hold of this school, you can bet at some point in time there would be an emergency management building on this property, and there would also be a recreation center on this property. Hey, why not stop there? Why not the condos on Williams Street? Why not subdivide the property into condos on Williams Street? That's what I should see happening if a political candidate's getting. So, thank you very much for coming, and I appreciate everybody's support. Good night.
I apologize to the timekeeper who tried her best. Normally, I have my own microphone, so I start saying, "Thank you, thank you, thank you", you know, and they get the idea. But it was a little hard in this setup. I do want to mention that we have a young gentleman recording the event, and the PTO is going to have the complete recording of everything from start to finish on their Facebook page.
We'll post it on our Facebook page.
Usually, we would hope that individuals, if they're recording it on their own, would not use any parts of this event to use in campaign literature or anything because you only have the authorization of the League of Women Voters. Meanwhile, you all know that Election Day is November 8. There are three ways to vote. Some of you may have already gotten your vote-by-mail ballot. You can put it in the mail, put it in a drop box, or take it to the county headquarters. In-person voting is starting on October 29th, that's a Saturday, and will run for nine days through November 6th, and then, of course, in-person voting. I do want to mention that, you know, you got your feet wet listening to this forum. The League of Women Voters of Bergen County is holding a virtual forum for county executive that offices up for a four-year term. It will be held on Tuesday, October 18th at 7:30. I have a flyer here that the PTO could circulate, hang up. And then also, the Bergen County Board of Commissioners has three seats up for election. The virtual forum will be on Monday, October 24th at 7:30. The League of Women Voters of Bergen County is also going to be hosting an in-person forum for Congressional District 5. And off the top of my head, I don't know whether Rochelle Park is in 5 or 9. 9. Okay, forget that. Once again, you know, use your vote wisely. The League also has a website, an online voter's guide called Vote 401. You can find the candidates for all the offices that you were, in some cases, the candidates were asked to answer questions, and in some cases, the candidates complied. But anyway, have a good evening. Enjoy the nice weather tomorrow. Good night.